Mayor Hodges, the public has been admitted.
Thank you, City Manager Seisland, and good evening to all and a warm welcome to you. Tonight, I have the honor of calling to order the first meeting of the newly seated Gross Point Park City Council at 7:00 PM. This is not my moment or your moment, it is our moment, and we are going to get it right. This will be a year of focus and accountability because we have a lot to accomplish with infrastructure at the top of the list. Good teams get results, and we're going to start building ours now, beginning with Roll Call, which will look a little different tonight. Our meetings will be efficient and well-run, but tonight, let's take a moment to give the community a sense of who their team is and us a chance to get to know one another better. There's no reason why hard work can't be fun, so let's have some. Here's the deal. Because this is Roll Call, each member of council received a care package of fun, well, kind of silly stuff actually, to get them through this meeting, before the meeting actually. It was filled with Swiss rolls, Tootsie rolls, cinnamon refrigerator rolls, and the piece de resistance, a delicious pumpkin roll from the park's very own Heather Levine of Elm Street. They were also, excuse me, they were also asked via a rolled-up message to quickly answer these fun questions in five seconds or less. And I tell you, colleagues, if you exceed that five seconds, you will allow me to do my first gamble. Here's the questions. One, who is your favorite role model? And two, what makes you roll with laughter? Clerk Blayhut, can you please call the role?
Hodges.
My favorite role model is Mayor Duggan because he builds teams and he gets stuff done. What makes me roll with laughter? These three movies, Christmas Story, Napoleon, and Elf.
Councilmember Rayland.
Good evening, everyone. My role model is my wife and my daughter, my family and my close friends going through what I went through. It was very humbling to see so many people step up and offer me thanks, and many of you on this screen helped out a lot, so I really appreciate it, and you've become my role models. What makes me laugh is the gross point news. Thanks.
Councilmember Fluid.
Hi, so I wasn't sure what order we were going in, and we've switched it up a little bit. I'm present, and I have several role models depending on what characteristic you're speaking of, but I will say my council role model has been Laurie Reed.
And what makes you laugh, Member Fluid?
Um, let's skip over that part. I'm gonna leave it at that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Caulfield.
I've got plenty of role models. I would say the one that comes to my mind would be my mom, because from day one, she has taught me to be a giver and not a taker in anything that I do. I would say a role with laughter would be my youngest Lucy, my youngest daughter. She keeps us on her toes, and we just laugh every day.
Councilmember Gallagher.
Present, my role model is Nikola Tesla for his vision and innovation. What makes me laugh? A well-timed witty joke makes me laugh.
And Councilmember Veener.
Thank you, present. My grandfather, the man never faced a challenge that he didn't power through, and Rodney Dangerfield is the greatest stand-up comedian of all time.
With that, I believe we have a quorum, and before we move on, I will add something that I admire in each of you that not many people may know. Member Fluid, I don't know that everybody realizes that you are a published author and that you can be found on numerous bookshelves and Kindles. Member Relin, I don't know that many know that you are an accomplished artist and can be found on many walls. Myself, not in our walls, in my drawer actually, because you've made some greeting cards out of your beautiful paintings. Miss, Member Caulfield, you were an actor in Annie for the Gross Point Theater, and you also went to Disney School, which I think is pretty cool. Member Veener, you run not one manufacturing operation, but many, and you also are a fabulous maker of bread. People should know that. And Member Gallagher, you know infrastructure, as I learned yesterday, which is awesome, and you also attended school in Paris. Ooh la la. So with that, I hope you all can see, members of our community, that we have a talented team, and I'm anxious to work with each and every one of you, and I appreciate you rolling with me tonight. So now it is time to get to work by honoring our country with the Pledge of Allegiance, which is ever more meaningful with this week with the approaching Veterans Day. If you could all please stand. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to their public, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the approval of the consent agenda, and for the benefit of the public, to understand what a consent agenda means, it is intended to create meeting efficiencies so that we can move forward quickly with these items. They're typically routine and not subject to debate. They're shared with the council in advance, and if at that time the council, any individual council member might feel additional discussion is warranted on any of those items, they can pull that item from the consent agenda and put it on their regular agenda so that discussion can occur. That did not happen this evening, so all of these items remain on the consent agenda, and with that explanation, I would ask for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve. The consent agenda.
Thank you.
I'll support.
Supported by Member Fluid. Any discussion? No? All in favor?
I.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Moving on to the next agenda item is public comment, which is a very important part of the meeting. As I said in my opening remarks, accountability and focus is important, and the community ensures both of those things from us, and you make us better. So thank you for taking the time tonight, members of the community that are going to speak. City Manager Seisland, I turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor Hodges. I have no written public comment, and I'm gonna go and share my screen to see if there's anyone for spoken public comment. Mayor Hodges, I have no spoken public comment.
All right, thank you, City Manager Seisland. With that, we move to the next item on the agenda, which is the manager's report as well as a public safety report. City Manager Seisland.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Hodges. So council before you is the manager's report, and so I'll go over a brief couple topics here. We had a DPW groundbreaking on October 27th, which members of the council, TIFFa and Public Works, joined the architect and builder in a ceremonial shovel groundbreaking at Wayburn and Mack. And as of right now, I know DT is working on utility work over on the site, so very excited to get that job started. The TIFFa Board approved a bid for cleaning of the alleys, shrubs, brush and weeds within the TIFFa District. That is currently in progress right now and expected to be complete within the next week and a half. The dog park, Director Craig can maybe touch on a little bit later, but after a couple efforts and such of cleaning up and everything, we reopened the dog park today. Wayburn Development, which is near the 1400 block, there was a proposed development for some condominiums. The city is currently awaiting documents from developer for building department review, and we will have a future planning commission meeting and potentially a ZBA of the city council. FEMA, the final deadline for filing is November 12th of this year, so if you haven't done so, you've got a couple days still to finish that up. CCTV and sewer cleaning, Pipe Tech, which was hired by the city to conduct sewer cleaning and televising work. They're currently right now still in the southwest portion of the city, and they started about in the 1400 blocks of Wayburn, and you can visit their progress up on the city website under Departments, Public Works, and Sewer Televising Program. Just as an update, which is very important to Gross Point Park, during the storm events that happened in June, the city had about $900,000 in expenses due to the cleanup and some damage done to City Hall. Our governor, Gretchen Whitmer, has appealed this to FEMA, as FEMA did deny our initial request for reimbursement. The appeal follows the completion of additional joint preliminary damage assessments with federal and local officials, which is for the extent of damages with storms in Ionia, Washtenaw, and Wayne Counties. If this public assistance program is activated, local governments affected by these storms would be eligible for the grants to supplement response and recovery costs. Those costs include debris removal, repairing roads, bridges, and public buildings and damages to public utilities. A discussion regarding Trombley, which is ongoing right now at the Gross Point Public School System Board Meeting tonight. I had a discussion with one of our board members in Gross Point Park, David Brumba, and Superintendent John Dean regarding what's going on with Trombley. In the most brief way, they're proposing a discussion that will consider adoption, potential of an alternative option to close the Trombley ECC and continue to use the elementary school space for satellites if and when available. And so far, I've been in discussion with Mr. Dean today that he keep us informed of what's going on, as there might be a proposed vote later on in November. Regarding TIFFa and DDA Director, I'm still searching for that lucky individual to assist me with TIFFa and DDA, so if you know any lucky individuals, please have them contact the city. And as well, Assistant City Manager, I'm completing the final stages here, and within the next month, I should have a posting looking for that other individual that'll be assisting myself and the team here at Gross Point Park. And with that said, that's my discussion topics. I'll be happy to answer any questions before we move on to Director Gerald.
Any questions for City Manager Seisland? Member Fluid?
Thanks. I believe this is the best time to answer this question because it's specifically directed at the city manager. So for background, in July, for those of you who were paying attention to city council meetings back then, we approved the application for the state revolving fund because we have a serious project that has to get done. It's a state unfunded mandate, which is gonna cost us over $30 million to replace all of our lead lines and then select water mains that also need replacement. So we approved the plan in July for the city manager to present to the state. We just found out that in August, that plan was denied by the state, which we kind of expected to happen. That was not a complete surprise. However, I wanted to follow up on that because I think we need to get back to work on that quickly, and I know there are things that are up in the air in terms of grants and federal funding and infrastructure funding. However, it was my understanding that we actually had to start making those replacements and repairs in calendar year 2021. So I wanted to bring that back to the city manager and find out where we are with that and what we're gonna be doing and how quickly we're gonna be returning to that project.
Thank you, Councilmember Fluid. So unfortunately, there were many communities that applied for this. We lost the funding count by four communities, and because we are not a disadvantaged community, those that were funded below us, you know, did still get some funding, however, Gross Point Park did not. So, you know, I would like to bring back to city council a potential discussion and possible vote of reapplying for that. More often than not, if Gross Point Park or community is within a queue for several, you know, grants or opportunities, depending upon what this federal, most recent federal infrastructure bill that just came about, there may be an opportunity similar to like the SAW grant that happened that would be able to assist us in further funding of water and sewer. Obviously, you know, our engineers and us and DPW are still looking at any way we can do so for that, so I imagine we will have a further discussion in the months to come as we're working with our engineers on a capital improvement plan for moving forward and how we're gonna allocate these dollars, and still having the other half of the American Rescue Plan funding, which is approximately another $550,000 that we'll have to consider for the following fiscal year. As of right now, the city of Gross Point Park is currently replacing those lead service lines that are identified through work that might be done with DPW. The way that the law is right now, if there is any damage or, you know, something that might be done or a investigation that leads to that it's a lead service line that has a problem, it is the responsibility of the city to start and replace that lead service line. I know, I believe, within the last year, we've probably replaced, you know, close to a dozen of those that have been fixed, and I imagine we're still gonna have a couple of those. You're looking at anywhere between $7,000 to $10,000, depending upon the amount, and Councilmember Fluid is right, unfortunately, is an unfunded mandate right now. That is the responsibility of communities across the state of Michigan, and we do have one of the tougher laws within the federal government, within the state federally. And so we're looking at, you know, further moving forward with that, and so, you know, looking forward to having those discussions and working with our DPW team and OHM advisors.
If I can follow up, is that something that is gonna be coming back to public service committee? Because am I correct that we do have to, we're already a little bit behind in terms of getting the project started, and it was my understanding that we had to get to work on it even while we're waiting for these other potential grants and infrastructure funding to come in? We can't just, we can't just wait on those?
No, and so fortunately, we do have 20 years, you know, to be able to do this. It is quite a tall task for many communities. I don't have the exact number off the top of my head, but I know we're looking in excess of $10 million in Gross Point Park alone, just for those lead service line replacements. And this is something that, you know, each community is tasked with. How are we gonna get that funding? And it's so, it's a further discussion we're gonna have to have as the city council moving forward on priorities for, you know, what we would like to see moving forward, and do we look at our water rates? Do we look at bonds? We have other alternatives that we certainly need to look at, because if we keep applying for the state and we're, or the federal government, we're not receiving those dollars, then we're gonna have to look at it on our own and see if that's something that maybe we bonded out on ourselves. So it's something we're definitely looking into, and I welcome, you know, having a discussion with the public service committee and members of city council regarding their priorities for such.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Member Gallagher.
I'd just like to compliment the administration on the outstanding job Becker has done and continues to do in the alleys as well as the dog park. Thank you.
Other questions for the city manager? Member Relin?
Thank you, Mrs. Mayor. Nick, I just wanna talk to you about Trombley a little more. I know, Michelle, you are on, or Ms. Mayor, you're on that team that was keeping a liaison with Trombley. I think Laurie was on there too. I'm thinking we should have a plan to try to help our residents address these concerns of the BOE. Maybe our team should help define some of the important aspects that we feel are impactful in helping keep Trombley open as a daycare, as an early childhood center, an education option for our residents. We know the need is there. We've heard from hundreds of residents that need it, and we got some emails today. I'm sure we'll get more after the BOE meeting as well. I spoke with Mr. Brumba as well for quite some time last night. As you know, him and my wife were key factors in designing that ECC. So I'm just looking for support from you, Mrs. Mayor, to help guide us here. You were on that team before. I don't know where we ended up, and I'm looking to see how we can make this a priority for our, for our city to help keep Trombley open. From what it sounded like, it looks like they're trying to squash it as an option and move everything to elementary school. So I don't know if we'll have an answer today, or if we have to have a little Trombley team meeting or something like that, but we need to keep that as a high priority as well, otherwise that school will be demolished.
Well, I agree, Member Relin, because this is such an important topic, I do think it warrants some clear direction to our city manager and to ensure that this is a staff and administratively-led endeavor. So I would ask that we have some consensus that directs our city manager to dig a bit deeper, to get some facts, to assemble a group, to see how this might tie into the master plan and other tools like that, to ensure that we leverage our voice and get the action that we would like to see to ensure that Trombley remain a viable asset. So in order to keep that focus and keep that accountability going, I would ask that the city manager come back to us with a plan and focus on where we can have impact. You know, whether there are remedies that are, can come through zoning or ordinances or other oversight bodies that have influence over Trombley in the school district, or is it a joint meeting with the Board of Education? Things like that that inspire accountability and good leadership. I would really like to see our city manager come back to us with some strategies that we can support him on and to identify what we as the elected body can do to ensure that that accountability is there and we get action as it relates to Trombley. Because the reality is, we only have so much control as to what happens there. So how do, how do we find those items that will ensure that we're putting on the pressure that needs to be put on? City Manager Seisland, I don't know if you have any reaction to that or if you have other thoughts?
Certainly, and also the Councilmember Rayland's thoughts. I think it's, you know, it should be a priority for Gross Point Park. Obviously, we are limited with zoning, but we also do have the ability that this is in our community and that this is something that we have to do. It's very important that the school board, you know, listens to our voice as a Gross Point Park government, that, you know, this is important for south of Trombley and everywhere. I mean, we have, you know, as we've seen, we're looking at a higher census data that's coming for not only Gross Point Park, but the other communities. I myself will potentially be one of those future that actually is looking for early childhood education. So there is a need out there. It's just working with the Gross Point Park administration, or school administration, to let them know how serious that they need to partner and work with Gross Point Park and keep that line of communication. And so I certainly welcome more of your thoughts, and it looks like Councilmember Veener has one.
Question. Obviously, we're gonna get more information after the BOE meeting today, but from what I've been reading, the linchpin of the argument for closing it is staffing and labor related. Is that correct? Or is there, is there more, more behind it? Because that seemed to be the primary issue.
That's what my discussion with Mr. Brumba, and I'm sure Councilmember Rayland would agree, and also looking at the agenda that was put out with their PowerPoint, it looks like it's, you know, about staffing retention issues.
If I can add to that, yeah, there is, there is, there is some more background to that as far as what administration is willing to do and wants to do and has expertise to do. So I think we can help them a little bit, push them a little bit. Nick, you've mentioned, I think it was in your report, I can't remember where it was, where Mr. Dean said they might be voting on this. They're not voting tonight. Did they say they're gonna vote in November, or is it gonna be December?
When I last talked to him, depending upon what happens tonight, it sounds like it's gonna be at their later November meeting.
Okay, so we don't have any more meetings for us. For that, so just keep that in mind if we need to have either a special meeting or a special committee session or something made up. So.
Well, Mr. Seisland, why don't we leave it that you evaluate it further and come back to us with a plan, understanding that we may need to hear from you prior to our December meeting?
Yeah, yeah, we'll absolutely have to. I'll have to have a further discussion, and I asked Mr. Dean after the meeting tonight that he talked with me about what that development is, and then I'll be able to formulate what we can do as a council and with suggestions moving forward.
Thank you.
Other questions?
May I do a motion for that?
I don't believe we need a motion. Mr. Howlett, what would you advise?
No, we don't need a motion to give Nick that direction.
Thank you.
I would just follow up, though, if you can, if, if they are pegging a specific issue, if it's staffing and labor, like if we have something concise as to that is their primary reasoning, then we can actually, or at least people in the community, we can actually focus on addressing that and alleviating it as opposed to some kind of broad esoteric reason why they're shutting it down. But like I said, if we, if we can actually hone it in on a specific issue, then we can get addressing it.
Oh. I would remind members of the public to please mute themselves. Any other questions for the city manager before we move to the Director of Public Safety? Thank you very much, City Manager Seisland. Safety Director, oh, Member Relin?
Yeah, I just have one quick one about the DDA TIFFa opening. I'm wondering where that's posted for people to see.
It was Michigan Downtown Association, Michigan Municipal League, and the city website.
Thank you so much. That's all I have.
Public Safety Director Gerald.
Good evening, members of council and the public. So first off, I want to say that on November 3rd, we received the Autism 911 Ready Bags. These will give officers the tools to help de-escalate encounters with those suffering from autism and other types of mental illness like PTSD. We got them on the 3rd, and we've had the training, and the bags are now on every patrol vehicle and fire apparatus. The new employee assistance program went into effect November 1st, providing coverage, excuse me, for all employees in the city, both part-time and seasonal. Tim Evans, Officers Tim Evans and Randall Olson will graduate from the Fire Academy this Friday, November 12th, and our newest employee, Corey Farmer, will be starting the Police Academy the second week of January. So I want to talk a bit, excuse me, about accreditation. The Michigan Chiefs of Police and the Michigan Sheriff's Association formed the Michigan Law Enforcement Accreditation Commission in 2015, with the first department in Michigan becoming accredited in 2016. The commission, with input from experts from around the country, developed 108 standards and professional objectives that represent the best practices for law enforcement. The initial process for accreditation takes on average two years. During this time, all department policies and procedures are reviewed, changes are made to meet the commission's standards. This initial process includes providing proofs for each standard. It's not enough to have a written directive. You must also show proof that you are implementing and following those directives. The process ends with an onsite review by the commission. The overriding concept of the standards is that they tell departments what they should do, but not how they should do it. So for example, do you have a chase policy? Does it cover all the points in the standard? The standard does not say you should or should not chase, just that you have to have a comprehensive policy. The end goal of accreditation is to enhance the professionalism of police agencies in the state and give comprehensive and obtainable standards to meet. After initial accreditation, departments are re-accredited every three years. Costs for accreditation for agencies, our size is about $2,700 for the initial accreditation and then $1,000 annually thereafter. Your Department of Public Safety would like to pursue accreditation. I know Nick is supportive of our intentions, but I do want to say that if the city supports this endeavor, there will have to be a financial investment beyond the fees to the Michigan Chiefs Association. There are areas of the department that are in no way up to the best practices, let alone the standards for accreditation. And so finally, we're gonna have a ribbon cutting on November 18th at 4:00 PM. Be at the far side of the fire hall, the apparatus base, and it'll be a ribbon cutting for our new gym. And all council members are invited, and the, the foundation will also be present. And with that, that concludes my report.
Great question. Thank you, Mr. Gerald. Any questions for our Director of Public Safety? Excellent. Thank you very much. I'm sorry, Member Relin?
Thanks. Chief Gerald, thanks for all you guys are doing to keep our city safe as always. I was wondering if you wanted to share the instance with GP Auto and the distinction of them having 50, 50 parking spaces in our city and how that's gonna alleviate some parking issues that we have.
Yeah, so Nick and I met with them back in, I forget the dates now, but I think it was back in June, to discuss with them the ongoing problem of the taking up an enormous amount of parking spaces in our downtown Churchill area. And so when we met with them, they told us that they have on hand at any one time 60 cars. At night, they can only fit, excuse me, they can only fit about 30 into their building, which means that they're putting up to 30 cars in our neighborhoods and in our parking spaces. During the day, they can only work on about 10 cars or so. So that means during the day or the business hours, they're sticking 50 cars somewhere, everywhere throughout the city. Nick and I told them that this is not acceptable and cannot continue, and to be quite honest with you, they have not heeded our pleas, nor have they made any attempt at all to implement any of our suggestions. For example, we asked them to implement some kind of a parking or scheduling management software or program of some kind. Don't take a car if you don't have the space to keep it. They have not, they have refused to do any of these things. So basically faced with this problem, they were sent a letter, I believe it was a week ago last Friday, as well as a letter was sent to the business owner or the building owner, the person who owns the building, and we told them that there's any further violations of the, basically zoning and state law, because they were engaged in a practice that was actually in violation of state law, that if they, if they have any further violations after the 15th of this month, that we were gonna, well, we, Nick would revoke their business license.
Cool. Thank you. Have you been able to share that with TIFFa, the TIFFa Board as well, since they're doing some parking studies and are very concerned about parking in that district? So it should alleviate some of that. I wasn't sure if you're able to share that with them yet.
It's something that Chief Gerald and I have had some discussions with the MKSK, who is our master plan consultant and also doing the parking study. When we are developing this parking study, we let them know about this problem, and then this is going on, so yes. Uh, when we are developing, uh, this parking study, we let them know about this problem. Uh, and then this is going on. So yes.
Yeah. And thanks for, uh, Scooby doing this, this, the situation at hand. So good work. Thanks.
Thank you for that report. It'll be important to be in partnership with our business community with that, with, uh, at the same time, upholding all of our, um, expectations. Member fluid.
Director Gerald, I just wanted to say, I really appreciate these very detailed updates that you've been giving us the last few months. Um, it's really interesting to hear about all the things that you're working on and I appreciate it. I just had one question, which was on the accreditation process that you were talking about. What is the benefit of getting accredited? For, for instance, does it mean we would have, um, maybe be eligible for federal grants or something like that? Or is it, is it more just a, a certification that means that we're doing things the right way?
So most importantly, it's going to push gross point park into the 21st century, whether we like it or not. Uh, so for example, one of the standards is, do you have an employee assistance program? We did not. And so now we do. And it's, it's forcing us to look at everything we do in the police department and reevaluate it. So, uh, for example, if you look at a, an agreement that goes back to nineteen forty-nine that was entered into between, uh, all the gross points and Harper Woods about a radio, uh, and, and our shared radio expenses. Well, that agreement was like I said, penned in nineteen forty-nine and has not been updated or reviewed since then. Unfortunately, a lot of our policies and procedures within the police department, uh, not, not that they're nineteen forty-nine, but they haven't been updated for quite a while. I did catch one when I first got here, which was, uh, a prohibition on panhandling, which is, uh, it's not constituted, it's unconstitutional to enforce, uh, or, or to ticket or arrest somebody for basically for vagrancy or for begging that it's not constitutional. So we were able to catch that, but it, this type of a process will allow us to go through all of our policies and procedures, our, our pursuit policy, our use of force, or all of those kinds of things, uh, data sharing, information sharing. We'll have to go through all of it. So it's going to get us back to being modern. And, uh, uh, some side, side benefits are it lowers your insurance premiums because you, you're supposedly doing it right. Now I will say accreditation is only as good as the people who are implementing it. You have to be able, it, it all comes onto accountability and that starts with me and my, my command staff to make sure that whatever these standards are that, that we attain, that we do maintain them and we do follow them. And I would say if anybody has any questions about what I'm talking about, you can Google Punta Gorda, Florida shoots an eighty-two year old librarian. They were nationally and state accredited, but they didn't follow the standards that they had in place and they ended up in a citizens police academy, shooting and killing an eighty-two year old librarian. So it, it really does come down to accountability.
Okay, I can certainly appreciate that. Thank you.
Member Gallagher.
Oh yes, Chief Gerald, what, what DPS members will be assigned the task of having accreditation?
So we have our accreditation manager is, um, Chris Powell. But we're going to have subject matter experts on all the different topics. So use of force, we'll have our u, use of force experts in within the department, look at the standards, look at our policy, make recommendations for changes and updates, and then I will have final approval on those.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you. We will move on to our committee and commission reports. Uh, since we met so recently as a city council, we only have two reports this evening, the first of which is the ethics committee, which met on October 27th, and I understand our city attorney Howlett will be making that presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, yeah, so we had our first ethics, uh, complaint filed. It was filed by Ms. Signarino against city manager Sizlin. There was a public meeting to discuss the ethics board's opinion in the matter, which was to dismiss it without a hearing, essentially on jurisdictional grounds. In other words, the complaint really didn't implicate a violation of the ordinance. And so it was determined and discussed at the public hearing or not hearing, public meeting, that there were no, um, alleged violations, properly alleged violations of the, the ethics ordinance. And so it was dismissed, um, by that opinion. Uh, we've had two new ethics complaints filed recently. Um, they are, one was filed by Sherry Cotton, one was filed by Ray Batera, uh, both against council member Rayland. Um, I think information about that has gone out to both the complainants and, uh, council member Rayland. Um, that will be set for a public hearing tentatively on December ninth. I don't know that the information on the hearing has been posted yet, um, but it will be shortly. And so that's, that's what is going on with the ethics board at the moment.
Thank you, city attorney Howlett. Any questions? Member Ellen?
Jake, can you tell me what that violation was that was aimed at me?
Have you not seen the complaint?
I have. There's no complaint there. Just gives me the date.
It's just on the letter. Okay. Oh, yeah. Why don't I send that to you offline unless, I mean, we can discuss it now if you want the, the, but I can send you those complaints, um, directly to you. You should have been given a copy of those.
Yeah, I was hoping so. That's why I didn't think it was.
Yeah, no, that's, that's a mistake. We'll, we'll correct that right away.
And the second thing is, why was that sent to my home? Shouldn't that have been sent to the city hall?
I didn't send the letter.
No, you didn't. You didn't send the letter. That's why I think it's a mistake. Um, it came to my home address. And it didn't have any information that I could use. So I don't know. No, it was on, uh, one of the board members from that.
Yeah, that's, I guess that's my point. They, the board member, I'm a non-voting member.
Yeah, yeah. No, I understand that.
In nation, in nature. So I don't, I can ask why that was sent to your home. I think maybe just for efficiency sake, um, you know, nothing personal or anything like that. I think just to make sure that it got into your hands as efficiently as possible.
Okay. I didn't know if there's a policy or they have a process on how to deliver these.
Um, to be honest with you, uh, we don't have an official policy. Yes. This, this is all very brand new to.
No, I understand.
Ethics board. Um, and so that's something that we can take into consideration. If you'd prefer, you think it's a better practice not to send those to, to home addresses. I wasn't, I think I'm.
No, I'm not blaming you.
On the letter, but.
Yeah, no, I'm not blaming you. I'll send you a picture of it later on.
Okay.
Thanks for your help.
Any other questions? Okay, moving on to our second committee report, which would be the recreation commission, which met on November 3rd. We have our park director Chad Craig here, present to make that update.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. Uh, I'll try to keep it fairly short and sweet for everyone this evening. Uh, I just wanted to start off first with our, uh, Halloween in the park event. Uh, most of you were either at it or volunteered at it. Um, that's probably one of our biggest community events that we have. Um, and we sold five hundred and ninety-five tickets this year, which is probably the second most in my time that I've been here. Um, we had a great turnout for it. The weather was nice. Um, and it really is a thank you to everyone in the community because it's not only our staff, um, but it's all the residents, uh, gross points south, um, that come together and make that a successful event. So again, that's one of my favorites, just with, with everything that's involved with it. Um, we're, you know, hopeful that we can go back next year to probably, um, what we like to call our more normal trail, you know, a longer trail with some haunted houses, some other, uh, activities at the end of the event. Um, and I will also make sure that I have enough donuts for everyone on hand next year. They are quite popular and I don't think I had enough this year for everyone. So we'll, uh, we'll make sure of that next year. Uh, I know a lot of families like the shorter trails. Um, but I also had a lot of families that like it to be a little bit longer, um, event as well. So we're, we're going to review that next summer and as we get closer to planning for that. Um, I'll also touch base on our lunch with Santa event. That's going to be back in person again. Um, I hope tomorrow that we will have, uh, registration out for that. It will be Saturday, December 4th. Uh, we will have three time slots, uh, ten thirty, twelve and one thirty, all about an hour long in length. Um, we plan to have, uh, Santa sleigh there, uh, trackless train, um, crafts, uh, pizza lunch, and of course the, uh, the big man Santa will also be stopping in. So we're looking forward to that. Again, hopefully registration info will be out tomorrow. That is another one that unfortunately this time will be in person, um, just because there is a uh, a price difference in the fees for the adults and the children. And it's, um, difficult for us to set it up on our rec pro software, doing it that way. So it's another one that we'll have, um, that's in person. We're still working on some of those to, to better make them online. So those who can't get down there, um, during the business days or business hours, um, you know, we'll be able to do online. So that's, that's the plan. We're just still working some things out like that. It's our biggest problem is the pricing. Um, you just can't have it be under one registration with different prices. Um, also the theaters, um, we're getting great attendance right now in the Scott theater. We have six showtimes a week and we're averaging anywhere between a hundred and fifty to three hundred people, um, at those shows during the week, which the numbers have been great. Again, we've had some decent movies in there, which has helped. Um, and the, uh, Okowski theater has been about a hundred to a hundred and fifty. Um, we're still looking for improvement on, on that space, especially with it being a larger theater. Um, part of that are the, are the movies that we brought in so far. It's, it's kind of tough uh, on some of the, those shows that we've brought in. Um, but we've got some good ones down the road that'll be coming in. So that's going to help with those numbers growing. They're starting to already. Um, the other problem running into that, I was just talking with Mary Beth Hathaway, our activities manager, um, is limited, uh, theaters or select theaters for a lot of the, the new, new movies that are coming out. Um, they're only opening on to like five hundred theaters across the country and different things, which we can't quite get a good grasp on. And even with the companies that we deal with, why they're just doing select theaters, because at a time like this, you would think they would be kind of opening up to as many venue streams, you know, as they can. Instead, with some of these movies, they're only picking two or three, uh, theaters in the area. So if you, you see some movies that are coming out that you wanted us to get, or you thought would be popular enough for us to get, um, sometimes that's beyond our control. So we may not be able to get what you want yet, just because the theaters aren't allowing us to. Uh, any questions on those? Or would you guys like me to keep going until the end and some questions?
You can keep going, please.
Okay, perfect. Um, we've got a, a ton of fall and winter programming that we're planning, uh, in the parks. Um, our rock steady, uh, boxing program, uh, that's focused towards those, uh, with Parkinson's. I said anywhere between fourteen and seventeen people, which is seventeen people is the max of that program. Um, the numbers have been great. They keep growing. Uh, you know, new faces and things like that. That's been a great program. And again, there's no one else in the points that I believe is doing anything like that. Um, so it's really nice to, to kind of be able to feature that and show that program off. Um, I have to say it, it's always kind of a joke, but, uh, we have another sold out session of cornhole. Um, I know it's, it's funny, but we've got twenty-eight teams involved in that. The numbers are always great for it and we'll have a second session. Uh, probably the end of January or so of twenty twenty-two. Um, we're going to have a drop in pickleball. Uh, we'll start back up. I believe it's November fourteenth. Those days and times are posted. We're also going to be doing some more pickleball lessons. And we're also working with Patrick Cardinelli, who's our, uh, pickleball instructor, um, to see if we can put together a pickleball league one night a week. So we're kind of trying to work out the logistics of that. And I think that would be quite popular. Um, we're also looking to partner back up with Skyhawks who ran, um, most recently a couple of soccer and baseball programs for us over at Patterson Park. Uh, they have got a tiny tots basketball program, uh, beginner basketball and just regular basketball. And those are age ranges, three to five, six to eight and eight to eleven, um, on Sunday morning. So again, a, a great time that we can utilize instructors and still have participants come down and have the rest of their day to do whatever else they'd like. So we thought that would be a great addition, considering we have a full-size gymnasium and ice skating lessons. We've not only added more classes, but we've added, uh, Saturday skating lessons as well. For those who can't make it during the week, we will be doing Saturday morning. Um, and that is new and it looks like from what I'm hearing on the community page, we've already sold out on everything. So I'm going to talk with our instructors, uh, double check with our finance department, make sure we can add some additional classes for that as well. Um, a couple of items are chili fest. We're looking potentially maybe the end of January, maybe, uh, another early mid February. Um, and we think we're going to go another year with keeping that in the business district. We felt it went really well last year. Um, you know, we're still not quite in the clear yet, and this could be a really fun event, uh, for the community, surrounding communities and working with our local businesses, uh, to keep that event, um, kind of in the downtown business, uh, district. It's, it's nice in the parks, but it does limit, uh, those who can attend the event. So we're going to do another year, uh, Churchill, um, Charlotte void and a few other areas. Um, another idea we are kind of tossing around is we don't believe that there will probably be a dead, a daddy daughter dance, um, in twenty twenty-two with the gross point school systems. So I'm, I'm putting some thoughts together and working with my staff, uh, to potentially host some type of maybe a superhero date night or two, two date nights. Um, and keep that at Windmill Point Park using the gymnasium, the Tompkins Center and some other areas. Um, you know, pizza dinner, arcade games, uh, DJ dancing, um, some other items, uh, photo, you know, ops, things like that, prizes for best dressed, you know, superhero teams and things like that. So I think we could have a a fun time with that. I'll probably reach out to some local businesses and see if they're interested in sponsoring that. Um, and maybe make it a Friday and Saturday night activity to see if something like that would make sense to kind of replace that until we get back to having our, our dances again. Um, the last item is the dog park. I've been working with, uh, backer landscaping, you know, uh, quite a bit recently to make sure we could get a few, few items under control that, you know, uh, due to just the popularity of the park, we ran into some, some turf issues and things like that. Uh, I think we've remedied those. Um, they added some additional drainage. They added some drainage where the, uh, drain is for the, uh, uh, drinking fountain, things like that. So there's no more of that leaking into the park area. They put down some new sod. We actually put a, the, uh, kind of pebble trim that you've seen around the outside of the, um, interior part of the park. We've also put that around the drinking fountain now as well. Excuse me. Um, we've also put down. Excuse me, guys. Uh, we've also put down some straw beds. Um, and fence that area off. So, uh, we're looking pretty good now. Open back up. The activity has been good. I'm sorry about that.
No problem. Thank you, Director Craig. Member fluid.
Thanks. Um, the only question I have was about, um, in-person registration. And as you said, we're not able to do it online. Yeah, we don't have the capacity to do that. But I'm trying to think of other ways that we could be flexible because we do hear from a lot of people who have to, you know, be at work on those workdays when registration opens and they still want their kids to have the opportunity to participate in those events that sell out really quickly. Can we open registration on a Saturday morning instead of a weekday morning? And I, I know, for instance, you're probably not at work on a Saturday, but um, we do have employees who work on the weekends. And if we could do that when we register for these really popular events, that would certainly make it more flexible for some of our families to be able to attend.
Uh, absolutely. I think we could, we could probably do that. Part of my concern is, and, and we've held that in the past, um, we kind of stopped doing it um, in the summer like we used to, because we had enough of the programs that went online that we no longer had to be down at the park. Um, so it's not anything that we haven't done in the past and we do work a lot of weekends um, already. So it's not, you know, we tried to limit it at certain points of the year because we know we're going to get hit hard other times of the year. Um, but opening it up on a Saturday or even in the evening, something like that, uh, I think is we can definitely do that. A, a problem we might face a little bit is the number of individuals we have. And if there's a line of, you know, forty, fifty, seventy-five people there, because they know that's the way to get there. We might run into that seventy-sixth person that's waiting in line. Um, that finally gets through the line and then we've sold out of the, uh, the event. But yes, I think as what you're saying for someone that works all day, we do try to work with the residents too, if they're able to kind of give their information and drop a payment off. After that, we hold them to basically within, you know, ten to twelve hours or twenty-four hours by the next business day, the payment needs to be there, or we have to take them back off the list to try to help with those that, that can't get in at that time. Um, I'm just trying to look to do the, you know, be the best interest for our residents. I can, I could most likely make it super easy and put it online. Um, but the adults would have to pay the same fee as the children. Um, and I'm just trying to keep it, all they basically get is the lunch. So I'm trying to keep it as cheap as possible for the adults. So they're not spending, you know, an arm and a leg for three kids and two adults to attend it, when really all they're doing is enjoying lunch. I could make it ten dollars for everyone or eight dollars for everyone. And they could sign it up right then and there. But then I feel like, you know, it's, it's not right of me to charge them for all the stuff that the kids are enjoying. I think that's what a lot of other areas do. So that way they can just have the online registration. So we're, we're kind of trying to look and explore that and see if there's some, some better ways we can do the online registration. I'd love to have everything be online. The same difficulty you run into with Camp Windy Mill, there's just a lot of different cost factors and breakfast options and things like that, that we're going to try to simplify in a way so that it can just be done that way. Um, even if it's using basically an online registration to take a spot and then allow you to come in and pick the camp. and then allow you to come in and pick the campsite or something like that. So I'm really trying to focus on that as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, we don't have to figure it all out right now, but as you're, as you're, I appreciate you kind of trying to sort through it here while we're, while we're meeting here tonight. But yeah, if you could, you already are keeping that in mind, but I think it's important to make that option available when we can. Thank you.
Welcome.
Other questions? Thank you, Director Craig, for taking time out of your evening and for all that you do for the park. Moving along in the agenda onto unfinished business, the next item is the Zoll X Series Monitor AED. Mr. Seislin and Director of Public Safety Gerald, would you like to take the discussion from here?
I'll let Chief Gerald go ahead and take us away.
All right. So I talked about this instrument at the last council meeting, and everybody has seen it in the council packet. So I'm not going to read it all again, but I will tell you that when we, all we have right now is the basic AED in the ambulance. So if we respond, the only time that's going to be used is when somebody's down, unconscious, and unresponsive, and it's warranted to have the shock, which means that the AED has sensed that there's no heart rhythm and they're going to, or a defibrillation going on, and they're going to do the defibrillation. The big advantage to the Zoll cardiac monitor is it is an AED, but it also does so much more. It gives blood oxygen, it checks blood pressure, and you can set it so that it continually updates or retakes those vitals so that the EMT doesn't have to continually stop and then do blood pressure again. This thing is doing it all. And probably by far, no pun intended, the biggest life-saving aspect of this instrument is the twelve-lead ECG, which when it's hooked up, it sends the signals via Bluetooth to the hospital. And we have, you know, I was speaking to one of my employees today who actually had a heart attack over the summer. And he was telling me that because the EMTs where he was at actually had one of these, when he got to the hospital, they were waiting for him. They took him right in, set it up, and they put in a stent. And I don't know the medical term, but everybody calls it the window maker. And so his life was saved, and in fact, he was back to work within just a couple of weeks, full duty. So it eliminates the wait time in an ER. So somebody could be complaining of shortness of breath or some chest pains, and we take them to the hospital, and then they sit in the ER where the heart continues to be damaged while they're sitting there waiting. With this, they know what's coming in the door, and they are immediately bypass the emergency room and go upstairs. I believe one of my officers is with us tonight, Jim Thompson. So if you have any questions that are more technical in nature, he could probably answer those for you. But I do know that I got some questions regarding funding and some possible grant potentials. And so we looked into it, and Officer Jim Thompson looked into it for us. So some of the places that offer grants, Firehouse Subs does grants, although it's usually not very large. It's five hundred dollars or something. This manufacturer, Zoll, does work with an entity called EMS One. They do grants, but that process can take up to a year. And to be quite honest, I don't want to wait a year. FEMA has a two thousand and twenty-one Assistance to Firefighters grant. That application period opened today. It closes in December seventeenth. And again, no award would probably be made until after the first of the year. We are checking, we did apply for that, by the way. We started the grant application process for that this morning. But we are also checking in to see that if we are awarded the grant, can we take and just basically reimburse the city? But the other thing I wanted you to know is this is not a normally budgeted item. And so the funds for this are going to be coming out of the now disbanded Task Force Action. There's an account there that we, we have, it's called Recoverables. And that was money that we got from the Auto Theft Prevention Authority for housing the task force. And there's enough money in there to completely pay for this purchase. With that, I am going to ask that you approve the item. It totals forty-one thousand, sixty-one dollars and eleven cents. And I will also ask or answer any questions that you might have.
Perhaps you could get a motion on the table and then enter into discussion? Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
By Vener, seconded by?
A second.
My head was down, so I didn't see for sure. I hope I got that right. Okay, we can now move into discussion. Questions for Chief Gerald, Councilmember Gallagher?
Hi, thank you. I noticed in the minutes that you had requested six of these devices and the original cost of about twenty-nine K, and I see the cost coming in here about forty-one. I'm seeing for warranty and additional accessories is what it looks like for me. Are those accessories going to be shared by the other six? Or will we need those additional accessories and warranties for each one of those devices? The second question I had, I'm assuming two are going to go in ambulances and others will be distributed throughout the city, maybe in the police cars, et cetera. Where would those be going? And are we, are there any plans to provide AED training to citizens for those that would be located, say, in the Laban Center or something? And any for plans for citizen CPR training, for example?
Okay, so maybe I wasn't clear enough in my last presentation. The six that you're talking about are just the standard AED. The ones that we've had in the city, we only, I think we only had four or five throughout the city. So for example, Patterson Park didn't have any. Windmill Point, I think, had two. The Court had one, but all of them throughout the city were, not only were they no longer serviceable, we couldn't even buy new batteries for them. In fact, the last time we bought batteries for them, we had to go to some aftermarket battery. So those six have been already purchased, that was in the budget. Those have been purchased and distributed to Patterson Park, two to Windmill Point, the Court, the city. And I can't remember where the, maybe it was only five. I might have misspoke, it was only five. This unit is completely different from those. Those have already been bought and distributed. The cost of this unit alone is forty-one thousand dollars, and that's because the unit itself is twenty-nine thousand and some change, I think twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred. And then you have to get the twelve-lead EKG harness, all the different pads. There's different pads for infants, for children. I mean, everybody wants their handout for money, so they all make these really unique things to make it work. So, and we also wanted to get the extended warranty on a piece of equipment that is this expensive. Hopefully that clears it up.
It does, thank you.
Other questions? Member Vener?
So. Sorry, member Bowler?
Sorry, I had to ask if there were any plans for AED training to the citizens, you know, and or CPR training.
I will check into that and get with you, but I'm sure that wherever we're placing them, such as Chad's Personnel down at Windmill Point Park and Patterson Park, that we would train them, yes.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you, Member Gallagher. Member Vener?
So not to belabor it all, but my wife is an emergency doctor. Obviously, this is a tremendous piece of equipment. In fact, I believe the head of Wayne County EMS, who presented it to the department, has actually talked to my wife about the unit. The one thing I would ask is actually, what is the training protocol on these? Because the one thing that everyone, and all the physicians I speak to have said, without training, the unit does not work well. You have to actually make sure everybody is completely keyed in on it. But once they have it, it does a tremendous job. We also spoke a little bit about grants. I've been investigating grants as well. Obviously, I agree with you. This unit will make a world of difference, so I wouldn't want to slow-walk rolling it out. But again, obviously, budget is budget. So if there's anything we can do to help alleviate the costs, that would be great. But again, I think it's tremendous, and I'm absolutely supporting putting this in place. But again, just curious, the training, is that included with the fees that we've already discussed?
Yes. So in the forty-one thousand would be the training for our personnel. Jim Thompson with my department does a super job for us. I couldn't ask for anybody else. He has been teaching at the community college EMT classes for I don't know how long. He does our in-house training for our EMTs, saving us whatever the cost would be to send somebody to the community college for a semester to become an EMT. He himself is a full-fledged paramedic. So he's going to receive, he already knows how to do it, but he's going to get the training from Zoll, and then he is going to train all of our officers. In addition to that, DMC, which is Detroit East Medical Command Authority or Control Authority, they're the ones who basically give us permission to be EMTs and go out and provide these medical services to people. Their standards are that they really encourage fire departments or EMT providers to have this unit and to utilize it. And the last thing I'll say about the training is, we will know how to hook it all up and do it properly. But the beautiful thing is, we don't have to know what it all means. Whatever that information that's being sent to the hospital, the doctors are the ones who are looking at that and are going, oh, boy, we have a problem here. And they're the ones who are going to set up their cath lab and get it opened up and have people standing by when we do arrive, because we transfer ourselves. So when we arrive, they'll be ready for us. So that's the nice thing. We don't have to know what it's saying, we just have to know how to hook it up till it gets the right information out.
Other questions or member Rellen?
Thank you, Chief Gerald. Being a patient in September, I've had more ECGs and blood pressures, and pulse oxes done than I've ever wanted to know. And I know how important this is. As Councilmember Vener and Gallagher mentioned, this is super important. I think we all agree, it's a no-brainer, especially since our equipment's old. So I want to say thanks for the presentation, the details, like Councilmember Fluid mentioned. Your level of detail really helps us understand what's going on. And you being the expert, as well as Wayne County's recognition that this is recommended. I appreciate you keeping everyone safe. And my dad was in an ambulance earlier this year, and having this would have helped a lot more. So I see the value, and again, thank you.
Yeah, I can, I've shared the personal story before. My father had a heart attack, and he sat in the waiting room for, I don't know how long, before they finally got him back, and he suffered over sixty percent damage to his heart. It's the one of the few muscles in the body that does not regenerate. And so when it, when the muscle dies, it's gone forever. And so this type of a unit, even though it's going to take us a couple extra minutes to hook these leads up and transmit that information, like I said, my fellow worker that I talked to today had this happen, and he's back to work within weeks and full duty. So it really is a miraculous instrument to have.
So unless there's additional discussion, I would ask that the clerk please call the roll.
Mayor Hodge?
Yes.
Councilmember Rayland?
Yes.
Fluid?
Yes.
Caulfield?
Yes.
Gallagher?
Yes.
And Councilmember Vener?
Yes.
With that, the motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, Mr. Gerald. Thank you for bringing this life-saving opportunity to us. You just made our community all the more safe.
Thank you, and I appreciate being your first vote. Thank you.
One for the scrapbook, huh?
Yeah.
Moving on to council comment, do any of my colleagues have comments for this portion of the agenda? Member Fluid?
Um, I just noticed that since June of this year, we've had a standing agenda item, which was infrastructure updates. But we don't have anything on the agenda for this month.
City Manager Seislin, would you like to respond to that, please?
Yeah, so I can speak to that. I touched base with OHM Advisors. We did have our council meeting two weeks ago, and if there is anything of a new substance that we could provide for this meeting, you know, at this time, we did discuss Pipe Tech and their work being done with the CCTV program. The only thing actually, now that I recall, that was omitted is this week, we're expecting that the flow meters that were approved by the city council at its last meeting are being actually put into the infrastructure work right now, which will actually help with the sewer modeling for a flow within the Detroit River Interceptor and other interceptors within Grosse Pointe Park. So I expect Councilmember Fluid that we will have another update at the December meeting. But with the closeness of the meetings, we didn't have anything more of substance that we could provide. But expect as we move forward in the next month, you're going to still see OHM updates and other infrastructure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else for council comment? Okay, that takes us to new business, the appointment of the mayor pro temp. The role of the mayor pro temp is provided for in the charter, and it equips the pro temp to serve as the acting mayor in the event that the mayor is unable to discharge his or her duties. We are required as a body to elect one of our members this evening, which is the first meeting following the election. The term of the mayor pro temp expires at the first meeting following the next election, which would be in November of two thousand and twenty-three. It is the duty of the mayor to present a candidate for city council approval this evening, which I will do now. The decision-making points that I considered when determining who is best suited for this role are these. One, I was looking for broad community support, which I measured by the number of votes received, by the amount of community involvement that that individual has undertaken, their centered focus, focus, the respect that they have in the community, and the fact that they're an anchor in the community. The second decision-making factor was skill set. I was looking for somebody management-minded and results-oriented, and someone who has prowess within the priority areas that we're looking at, which is infrastructure and finance. And then the third decision-making factor was freshness. Somebody who would give us an opportunity for a fresh start as a community, who would have new insights, a mindset, and a disposition that I think will benefit us all. So for these reasons, fellow members of council, I present to you Councilmember Tom Caulfield for your consideration. It would make the motion to elect him as mayor pro temp for the city of Grosse Pointe Park and would seek a second from one of you.
Second?
Okay.
Moved by Hodges, seconded by Vener. Any discussion? Member Fluid?
Thanks. So I'll be voting no, and I just want the opportunity to tell you why. And it certainly has nothing at all to do with Councilmember Caulfield, who I've never even met, but who I've heard nothing but positive things about. I do not want the appointment, I'll be very clear about that. But I don't think it's appropriate to appoint someone at his very first council meeting. Certainly, none of us has a great, have a great deal of seniority, but two of us do. I also don't think that his appointment indicates any kind of bridge building, which is something that's been talked about a lot in the last several months. So I wanted the opportunity to explain that vote publicly and specifically to Councilmember Caulfield. But that's where I stand.
Thank you, Member Fluid. Other discussion? Member Gallagher?
I'm, thank you, Mayor Hodges. Given that Councilmember Tom Caulfield received the most votes on November second, and he clearly has the confidence of the community, as well as your confidence, I support his appointment.
Other comments? With that, clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Hodge?
Yes.
Councilmember Rayland?
Yes.
Fluid?
No.
Caulfield?
Yes.
Gallagher?
Yes.
And Vener?
Yes.
Thank you all, and congratulations, Member Caulfield.
Thank you, it's an honor.
Moving forward, Temporary Traffic Regulation Number Two One Seven. I believe your Public Safety Director Gerald will be leading this discussion item as well.
Yes. So this item before you tonight is a handicap parking space in front of thirteen twenty-three Lake Point. I did receive a couple of questions on this, and I did respond to all of council today with a little bit more of an explanation, which I will obviously go over again in public. So that home is located in the cabbage patch. It does not have a driveway. And the person has a valid handicap placard. And so this is a service that we have actually provided on other occasions in that location of the city due to the parking challenges, we'll say. For example, I've seen them on Maryland, and I know that they're on Wayburn as well. And with that, I'll answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Chief Gerald. Perhaps we can get a motion on the floor and then move into discussion? Is there anybody who would like to make that motion to approve temporary traffic regulation Number Two One Seven?
Also move.
Move by Fluid, is there a second?
I second.
Seconded by Caulfield. Discussion. Member Fluid?
I'm just curious how someone goes about asking for this kind of assignment for future reference.
Well, anybody can make the request, but then we would go- Well, anybody can make the request, but then we would go out and evaluate the actual need for it. And so again, like in the cabbage patch, there's first, they have to be able to prove that they are, do have the handicap placard or um permanent disability or whatever. And then we go out and we look at the area. So in this case, there's no driveway. If if her parking spot was taken uh maybe by someone who parks a lot of cars throughout the city for no reason or whatever, then where's she gonna park? And then she's gonna have to walk a long distance. So we go out and we just evaluate it, make sure that it's um appropriate to issue it. And then we uh put up a temporary and then ultimately bring it back to council and in this case, uh, approve it and make it permanent. It's temporary right now. It is up and we're asking it to be permanent.
But if someone needed something like that, would they reach out to you directly or to the city manager or?
No, Department of Public Safety.
Okay, thank you.
Member Viner?
Just curious, how common are these?
I don't know the exact number. I know three right off the off the bed. I know there's one on Wayburn. I know there's one on Maryland and I drove by this address this afternoon and there's one there already. So I know of three.
Councilmember Viner, I think in the five years I've been here, we might have had one other request come to city council.
Thank you.
Member, uh, Member Ellen?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Yeah, there's one next to Fairfax Market as well. Um, what's the length of validity? Is there a timeframe, like after two years you're gonna check or every year do you confirm that they're still still in need of this?
You know, I'm not real sure on that. I have to get back to you on that.
Okay, it's not important. Just wondering for for policy.
No, I agree. I mean, if it's up there forever and and the person moves on or goes to a different city, it should come down. So I'll check into that.
Thanks.
And if we don't have a process, of course, we should.
Mr. Howlett, to that point, would it be advisable to uh make this permanent subject to a change in circumstance? And if those circumstances change, it is uninvalid?
No, I would just make it permanent now and then we can revisit that. I'll have to check. I don't know off the top of my head uh with the code may or may not say uh or any kind of traffic regulations. So I would just vote as the motion that's on the table. And then we can come back to the information about potentially changing the process um to provide a mechanism for removing it. If the council has the authority to grant it, they would have the authority to remove it. So.
Thank you for that clarification, Member Gallagher.
Yeah, I thank you, um, Mayor Hodges. Uh, the question, maybe the process is by um reviewing a new certificate of occupancy. Maybe there's a way to make a note when um that occupancy has changed, that it's reevaluated at that time.
Good suggestion.
Any other discussion? With that, clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Hedges?
Yes.
Councilmembers Rayland?
Yes.
Fluid?
Yes.
Caulfield?
Yes.
Gallagher?
Yes.
And Viner?
Yes.
Okay, Director Gerald, you're on a roll.
Thank you. Two for two.
Thank you very much. Hopefully you can rest now. Uh, moving ahead to our draft master plan distribution discussion item. To set that up, I will note that at a meeting of uh October twentieth, two thousand twenty-one, the Grosse Pointe Park Planning Commission did review a draft of the Grosse Pointe Park Master Plan Update that was presented by MKSK. That followed a lengthy process uh which was, which engaged the community through a series of town halls, online surveys, uh, other analyses that were associated with that. Uh, the draft plan review process continues tonight with councils' initiation of the public review process period, assuming we do authorize that go-ahead tonight. If so, the steps that the city administration will take will include, one, advertising the hearing, the public hearing, which will be hosted by the Planning Commission on a date yet to be determined. Secondly, the document will be forwarded to neighboring jurisdictions for their review during a period of time. Third, it will be made available for public review for a minimum of sixty-three days, which is dictated by the State Planning Act. And all of that is uh intended to conclude by January of two thousand twenty-one with formal adoption of the plan by the city council. I'd like to thank the Planning Commission for its leadership, the administration for shepherding the process forward, the community for its full engagement, and certainly MKSK as well. So with that, I would ask for a motion to authorize the city to distribute the master plan to start the formal review process. And then we can move into discussion. Is there a motion?
Motion to authorize.
Motion by Viner, seconded by Fluid. Discussion. Member Fluid?
I'm just really happy we have it. I think um there's a lot of amazing information in here. There's a lot of detail. There are a lot of pictures. There are a lot of statistics from the community and I think um even um you know, we're gonna accept it. I think it's even gonna take a while for us to to realize how much good reference material is in here and it's something we're gonna be able to use for years. So um, I'm really happy that we did this.
Thank you for that, Member Fluid. Other comments? Member Ellen?
Thanks, Ms. Mayor. Yeah, I'm I'm very, very proud that we are, we're able to get through this part of it. I'm wondering where we should discuss um things that we see are missing or questions that we have. Should we wait for the planning commission meeting or should we send those to you, Nick?
So the good news is that you also, as city council members, have an opportunity, uh, Councilmember Rayland, that if there's things like you just said that you think are missing, that they should be added. Uh, if you could please send those to me, I'll forward that on to MKSK and working with the Planning Commission. Uh, so absolutely, you know, have at it.
Yeah, yeah. And just just to keep keep that open. I just, I don't see anything around trombly or uh curtail and altar as well as our gateways. Um, those are just some of the things. I'm still gonna dive into it as it is quite quite a large document, but it's very impressive. And thank you. Thank you, Nick, and thank you to all of council that took to support this and the planning commission.
Thank you, Member Ellen. Other discussion items? With that, I would ask that the clerk please call the roll uh regarding the motion to authorize the city to distribute the master plan to start the formal review process.
Mayor Hedges?
Yes.
Councilmember Rayland?
Yes.
Fluid?
Yes.
Caulfield?
Yes.
Gallagher?
Yes.
And Viner?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. Council comment. Are there any comments on new business? Member Viner?
It's not on the I would like to make a formal request of the city manager to investigate returning to in-person meetings with the intention of returning hopefully for the December meeting. Uh, I think I think this is long overdue. It's a return to normalcy. It's actually one of the most common things I was asked uh when I was going door-to-door. I think it's it's overdue and I'd like the city manager to investigate it.
City manager, what kind of direction would you want? Do you just want consensus or do you need a resolution?
Uh, you know, I think easiest would be maybe a consensus of uh city council. Uh, yeah, I think that would be the most helpful for me. And by the way, just as an FYI, currently, right now, uh, this, the Wayne County Health Department, uh, we can still have those through December thirty-first of Zoom meetings.
Member Ellen?
Um, wondering if we can add an amended amendment to that motion that we have a streaming option so that live, in person is not the only option, that we're also streaming for our residents to be able to watch live.
I don't know that we have a motion on the table, but with that said, um, we're looking for consensus. I think that might be something we all aspire to, but perhaps not able to require by December. But certainly send that message to the administration as well that that you and the communications committee can be evaluating how to accomplish that. Hope that satisfies your need, Member Ellen?
Sure, sure.
I'd like to be a priority. You know, I I I think we should set a deadline for that. If we can't have it by the December meeting, maybe that we have it by January or we can back to remote. I think it's very important for people to be able to watch remotely. I think that's where our engagement came from. I was at meetings before where we had six people. So in person is great, but Monday night comes around and we all have families and things, things get caught up and being an attendant at a city council meeting gets pushed aside. Today, we have a hundred and six people. We're not gonna have a hundred and six people in person.
Thank you. Good points. Member Fluid?
Thank you.
Um, that's actually why I initially raised my hand as well was um, we've been talking for, well, it's been more than a year. Close to two years probably before we went to Zoom meetings, we were talking about uh the best way to to uh to stream our meeting so that more people could participate. So if we were to go back in person, um, I would like to see us be able to stream those as well. I think one other thing to perhaps consider would be that even if um those of us on council are comfortable meeting in person, we might have community members who still are not comfortable with that. And if we are to go back in person, maybe we could explore using a larger venue where um residents, if they want to attend, could spread out a little bit more than they could in council chambers, which are actually pretty, pretty cramped. Sorry, excuse me. Um, so those are two things I would like to explore. If we were to um look at going back in person before the the Wayne County State of Emergency actually expires.
Do my other colleagues want to weigh in?
One more thing.
Member Ellen?
Yeah, I'm wondering uh what our policy is as a city on vaccinations. Our council, our council candidates are required to be vaccinated. I don't even know if our city employees are required to be vaccinated. Nick, do you know the answer to that? Or is our?
Yeah, um, in regards to uh vaccination, we do have, uh, you know, some of our members that are vaccinated. Uh, we do have others that are not vaccinated that made a choice. And as well, we do have, uh, you know, we have had discussions with the uh local unions, uh, you know, in representatives of the uh DPW and Public Safety and uh have made their choices as well. And then I don't know if maybe the city attorney has any other thoughts regarding that requirement or any other thoughts maybe I missed.
No, I don't think so. It, based on our size and there's also some pending litigation. I don't think the the mandate applies to the city. I don't think it's big enough in terms of number of employees. Technically, from a legal standpoint, you can require uh vaccination for employees uh with the exception of legitimate religious exemptions or if there's legitimate health and safety. So it's it's a, it's a decision to be made. There's no official mandate anywhere that I'm aware of that would require the city to do it. The city would, you know, it's up to the city whether to mandate that for uh its employees.
And that's what I was wondering, where where we stand as far as a hundred employee limit um that's going on nationally right now.
I don't, Nick, I, maybe I'm wrong. I don't think we're at a hundred employees, but let me.
We're, we are below, we're we're below, we're about sixty-five employees.
Just something to think about.
Hearing consensus, I'm hearing like where the disparity may be. There's an interest in being in person. However, that should be in tandem with some sort of streaming option. Are there other, Member Viner?
Well, this is the point. So we're kicking this over to the city manager. Again, person meetings worked for a century for this town. Um, and there's plenty of options we can do supplementally. But again, what businesses are doing throughout our community, um, there are options. People ask if they so choose, but the point is I would like to see us start working towards this because again, regardless of the December thirtieth or not, this is still something that we should be working towards. And again, I think there's enough impetus and desire for this. Again, this this is a very common uh thing that was communicated to me uh throughout all this. And again, I feel strongly that we need to have a sense of return to normalcy. I find it odd that, you know, we have an expectation that businesses can handle this, but then the city is uh is not. So again, I think this is why we're pushing this over to the city manager to investigate our option.
Think, are you comfortable with that, City Manager Sizlin, to explore this further and uh work to address the need for some sort of streaming solution, but also uh understanding the urgent need to get back in person as soon as possible?
Yes, Mayor Hodges.
Okay, we'll look forward to a report from you. Um, other items for council comment? Member Fluid?
Thanks. Um, I actually have two things. One is the appointment process for the vacancy that we have open. And I know this is something that you were planning on discussing over the weekend. Um, I was not available. So can you tell me and tell our residents where we are with that?
Yes, I do have a report on that. Thank you for tossing that ball in the air. For the benefit of the community, for those that may not be aware, an outcome of the recent election is a vacancy for the partial term remaining in my vacated seat. The time remaining in that term is two years. The charter provides for the city council to fill the vacancy within sixty days. And if unsuccessful during that time, a special election is to occur. The sixty-day period expires on January fourth. I believe it to be in the best interest of all to avoid the cost and complication of a special election. Uh, we do need to achieve normalcy as soon as possible so that this community can heal and move forward. I've spoken with all but one of um my colleagues and there appears to be agreement that a decision be made within that sixty-day period and as swiftly and professionally and transparently as possible. Um, to that end, I outline the following and seek the input of councils that we can appropriately direct the city manager. One, I would recommend that we post the position as early as tomorrow, no later than Wednesday, that we set a deadline of no later than December first and possibly sooner, depending on the will of this body. Third, that the boards and commissions application uh which is already available on the city's website, serve as the application device. It is the same method that we um followed when we had the last vacancy that we filled. Uh, fourth, uh, that um that application can be found on the website under the residents tab. From there, you go to forms and documents and from there to city council to find that form. Fifth, that we ask applicants when completing that form to check the other um category on the application and specify city council at that point. Then sixth, depending on the size of the pool, we will likely require um a special meeting sometime the first week of December, at which time we would interview those candidates with the hope of making a final decision at a regular December thirteenth meeting of city council. The administration is prepared to handle the interview and selection process internally. Uh, they did develop the questions in the format for the last process, which the League of Women Voters did ultimately manage for us. If there is not a will um amongst this body to proceed in that round, we can always approach the League of Women Voters again um as an as an option. The deadline for completion of the process per the charter is January fourth. That clock started ticking on Friday when I was sworn in. And with the holidays uh which will complicate things, I believe um what has been outlined above is the best-case scenario because it um attempts to get us to the finish line as soon as possible. So with that, and I'm happy to review any of that. Um, I realize it's a lot of information. Uh, for those that might be interested, I would open it up for discussion. And before we conclude the discussion, uh, we need to leave the city manager with direction on the following. One, the format, whether it's to be done internally or through the League of Women Voters. Two, what that timeline might be in terms of deadlines for applications, special meetings, um, et cetera. And then precisely, or at least some direction as to when that special meeting might occur. Um, perhaps uh the first week in December or some sort of general direction such as that. So with that, I will open it up to discussion and look forward to your feedback so we can arrive at some consensus. Any comments or thoughts? Member Viner?
I would just say that uh for the good of the community, I'd like to see this move uh in a hasty uh process because this is not like the vacancy that we faced uh when uh member Grant kind of abruptly left. This is something that everybody was acutely aware was a possible or likely scenario on post-election. And again, we have a lot of work to do and I, especially with uh everything we've been through this election, I would like to see this move quickly so that we can focus on the tasks at hand because we have some really pressing issues.
Thank you. Member Caulfield?
Yeah, I agree. Uh, with Councilmember Weiner, my, and my question I had, you said December first deadline. That's the deadline you're proposing for applications?
Yes, when speaking with the city manager, we felt that that was a reasonable date. With that said, um, if, you know, we need to move it up, we um can do that as well. We're just trying to give people the best opportunity um to be considered.
Yeah, just to follow up, I mean, I I want to give anyone who's, you know, thinking of joining us uh the opportunity to do so. Um, I'm just a little concerned on timing. If we have a January fourth, um, and we've got holidays in there. Everybody in this town has, you know, obviously been through this in the last six months and knows that there's a vacancy for the most part. Um, I just would propose a shorter timeline for application, I guess, just so that we can get moving on it.
Thank you, Member Caulfield. Let's see what our other colleagues have to say. Any other comments? Member Gallagher?
Hi, thank you, Mayor Hodges. Um, yes, I I um agree if we can move up the timing um before December first, I think that will be helpful for us. I think if community members, as they have been aware, it's a potential likely outcome. Um, there are folks who probably already are thinking about it. Um, it would help, be helpful for us and then we could have a follow-up. Um, you know, maybe that first through the first of December for for a review um and have a decision by the thirteenth. Um, I agree that we have the capability, um, the expertise to um handle it internally. Uh, so yeah, I think that's it. Yeah.
Thank you, Member Gallagher. Is there opposition to moving that deadline up as has been proposed to Member Ellen?
Just more discussion, not opposition yet. Um, I'm wondering what happens if we don't find consensus by January fourth?
If we don't um achieve that, by that point, we um are committed to a special election.
Okay, and this is for a two-year term, whereas Grant's term was of nine, ten-month um thing. So two years is a lot more substantial. Doing it this way, very rapid. Um, doing it this way very rapidly doesn't give the residents a lot of say. It puts it in the hands of us six, which uh. I I just throw to you guys, is that something we want to do or do we feel the resident should elect someone for for two years?
I mean, we're a deliberative body that's representing the residents and we were put in place to make these sorts of decisions. I mean, I'd like to see if we can't. I mean, if if we have a a complete, you know, loggerhead where we can't proceed, then then we get more uh, we have other options. But again, if we as a elected body can't actually come to a decision, which again, I don't see why we can't. Uh, I think this makes sense to move this. And again, we just went through this election season. I think people are looking for us to be focused on the business of running the city.
Uh, we can do that with six people. Um, we don't need to rush to get a seventh person. We can run the city with six as well. There's not a rush.
Of rushing, but again, this is a very different circumstance than when uh.
Exactly.
Granal left. Everybody for the last, I mean, since since registration and end of March or people applied, it wasn't understood that this was a possibility. So.
Yeah, I understand.
I think we can come to some agreement here. Member Gallagher?
Uh, yes, I just one more comment. Um, I think maybe it will be helpful to move things along um for us to be able to make decisions. Uh, a decision, um, if the city could post maybe on the website or Facebook those applications. I don't know if that's possible. Um, but there was and has been some discussions about i- it being a ease for the community um. To push it to them as opposed to having them come to us on the website.
Other comments, member Fluid?
Um, I just want to ask quickly, Hut, uh, what would the cost be of a special election?
Uh, I'm gonna say it's about ten to twelve thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you. That's what I thought. I just wanted to confirm.
Okay.
Other discussion. So it sounds like the outstanding issues are what the deadline will be for application. Um, and what the format might be. So is there opposition to moving the deadline to an earlier stage or will we prefer to remain at the three-week um timeframe for application?
I have another discussion question. I'm sorry.
Member Relin?
Since we're going through December and it is the holidays, is there any way to ask for an extension? To the sixty days?
City manager Hallett, excuse me, city attorney Hallett?
It was promoted, I guess. Um, no, uh, council member Rayland, there isn't. The sixty days is in the charter. And we would have to formally change the the charter to accomplish that. So it's not not really a viable option to extend the sixty days.
Okay, thank you. I have no opposition.
So given what I'm hearing, I to find the balance here, it sounds like remaining with that three-week deadline would um accommodate the most uh the the best greatest opportunity for people to engage. So if there's no opposition, we can. Direct the city manager to uh maintain that deadline. And then in terms of format, are is there just a a consensus that we can move forward with an internal um process internally and internally led process perhaps is the better way to say it?
Fully appropriate.
Appropriate.
Member Fluid?
I was gonna say, I think getting the League of Women Voters involved is is great. I think they're they're neutral. Um, and we know that they do a fantastic job and they did a fantastic job for us last time.
Member Relin, do you have an opinion?
No, no, I'm gonna remain quiet.
Okay, um, well, city manager Seisland, do you feel like you have enough feedback? Do you want more direction than that? Or would you like to explore options with the League of Women Voters and get back to us? And with the internal i- in comparison to an internal process?
Uh, you know, I could go either way. Mayor Hodges, we did have the League of Women Voters uh for the previous that was done. Uh, that was quite a challenge, obviously with Zoom, uh, but we did it. And uh, we had a lot of candidates at that time. Uh, however, uh, Clerk Blayhut and I have discussed both possibilities of what could happen. And knowing, uh, you know, if we were to go back to, and and this was another scenario in-person, um, you know, opportunity. Uh, this is something that her and I felt that the city could do as well. Uh, so it's really, um, it it could go either way. Uh, but certainly I look for your guidance as council members on what you prefer and give me clear direction on what you'd like me to do moving forward.
Okay, well, we do owe that to our city manager, member Gallagher. Okay, we've got a vote for internal. Uh, just informally, we'll do that. I think actually, I think we already know. We've got um. Uh, agreement from member Gallagher, Caulfield and Vener for internal. Fluid is League of Women Voters. Relin has not um committed at this point. I'm going to assume that means you could go either way, I'm a Relin.
Yeah.
I think I think for the sake of moving things forward, then I would also go with an internal review just to speed these um to speed the process. So um, as much as I appreciate the League of Women Voters and would agree with you, member Fluid, that they do do a great job and they are neutral. Um, in order to keep this simple and streamlined, let's move it forward. I I do believe in our city manager's ability to keep this transparent and professional. If in fact you go back city manager Seisland and find that there is a better option, I think we'd all be willing to hear that. But for now, your direction would be to. Uh, pursue an internal process to have the deadline set for December first for applications and that it would be posted immediately. Member Fluid?
What, when we say internal process, what exactly are we talking about here? It is but lay out for me what the process would be rather than having the League of Women Voters can conduct an interview forum where all of us would be able to. See questions being answered by uh candidates. When you say internal process, what exactly does that mean?
City manager Seisland?
Yeah, what that would entail council member Fluid is uh Clerk Blayhut and I could be the ones to uh ask the questions of the members. And you as the council members can uh just like before, review and tally up your uh. Uh, whether, you know, we do similar to the last process where we have a roll call vote uh depending on each member. And we'd also have a timer as well that we could uh, you know, go ahead and say, you know, I think we did last time a three-minute if I recall. And so that that's the process that would be different for an internal.
So just to clarify, when we say internal, it still means public. So it'd be very similar to what the League of Women Voters did, correct? So all of the interviews would be conducted publicly. The questions would be asked of them publicly. Um, the only difference would be it would be our city manager and our city clerk actually asking those questions rather than a representative of the League of Women Voters. So the commitment would be very much to a public and transparent process.
Can we ask that, uh, sorry, sorry to interrupt. Can we ask the League of Women Voters to set up those questions and share them the day of rather than anyone knowing them prior to? So it's an external.
I believe city manager Seisland, you developed those questions last time and shared them with the League of Women Voters. Um, and I'm not sure how it went from theirs. I don't believe the candidates had those questions in advance, nor did any of us. I believe they were kept private.
That is correct. Last time, it the way it was done, it was developed uh with uh help of my staff team here in Girls Point Park. And then we gave the questions to the League of Women Voters, I believe, uh, actually about an hour before the meeting. And uh, it was kept from any candidates or anyone uh to ensure, uh, you know, a fair process.
Okay, so internal can happen the same way then. I see what's going on.
Member Vener, did I see your hand?
No, I was just gonna make that point. I mean, effectively, we're just taking. You know, the the online zooming, changing that around, kind of expediting or streamlining it a little bit because I believe. This city manager Seisland, and I went through this, uh, city manager Seisland uh had done all the questions. So I think they were just the uh spokespeople for the the interview.
Okay, with.
Just to be clear, you said, are you saying three, you said three weeks? So is it the twenty-ninth of November now?
December first, I believe is the date we discussed. So applications for clarity would be due, they'll be um. The position will be posted tomorrow, no later than Wednesday. The applications uh will follow the boards and commissions application process, which is available on the website. Candidates will be asked to um uh to note the other category and at that point list city council. I think the other benefit of this is this helps. Fill our pipeline with talent for um uh assignment and appointment to other boards and commissions as well. We did find that benefit. Um, as a result of the last process too. So that's just a sidebar. Um, those applications would then be due by December first. We will likely have a special meeting sometime the first week of December. Uh, where at we would interview those candidates. And of course, that will all be predicated on the size of the pool and the like. Hopefully, we can accomplish that in one night. And then make a final decision on December thirteenth. I would also encourage my colleagues to be thinking about decision-making criteria. If there was um the benefit of time and if you all are in willing to, we could make that time. But I think it's important that as a body, we come to some agreement as to what sorts of skills and qualities we're looking for. We could even form a skill set matrix and um be able to then more um objectively rank candidates. Um, as to their actual ability to contribute to the community and the body as a whole. Uh, I know I will be doing that in my own brain. Uh, but if we want to be um doing that as a body as well, I certainly would be open to that. But for now, um, city manager Seisland, I I believe you have all the direction you need. If there aren't any questions, we can move on.
I have one, one thing to add. Um, uh, Ms. Mayor, you and I talked about this. The last time we voted as council on the appointment process, we did it in the order of roll call. I'd like to change that a little bit so we all have our votes. And I, in 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 actuality, it'd be flipping a card and everyone showing their votes. I know we can't do that. There's probably a better way to do that. But last time we did roll call, well, I was voting first and then we went through each candidate that way. I don't think that worked very well. Um, I'm wondering if we can come up with a better process for that to make it a little more secretive as to who we're leaning towards.
Yeah, I think that's really good input. And I I think once we know the size of the pool and you know how complicated this might be, we can um talk about what process we follow so that it's one that um leads to the best result. Um, so please be all thinking about how that might look. Um, once we get to that point, if there's only three candidate, you know, it's it it'll be predicated, I think, on the size of the pool. So. That's that's good feedback and I hope that everybody will be thinking about and exploring what those options might be. So with that, city manager Seisland, you feel good about where you're at and um you have the direction you need?
Yep, and we'll add, we'll start the advertisement tomorrow.
Thank you. Other comments from council? Member Vener?
Uh, I just want to follow up. I've uh some emails and conversation with city manager Seisland, and I want to extend it to everybody on council. Obviously, my paramount concern with getting on council was to work on infrastructure, obviously. E R V, I think, is a major, major point right now. We have to work on that, but there's further issues beyond that. Uh, got concerns with the. The storm water pumping capacity as well. And so I asked city manager Seisland if he could or the DPW could facilitate some touring of uh or some tours of the facilities. Just so we can get a better handle on it. And I think that'd be a good activity for any other council members who uh would like to partake. But the sooner I can get in there, the better. I just want to get a better, you know, lay of the land so I can see how I can be helpful and, you know, what we can work on with this.
Are you suggesting our first field trip, member Vener?
Yes, I am.
Small groups, no.
That's so, I'm sorry, city attorney Hallett, I think you just answered the question I was gonna ask about quorum or open meetings act. Are we able to do that collectively as a body or do we need to do that in smaller groups?
I'd have to look more specifically. It's probably better off to do it in smaller groups. But but also to avoid any discussion, um, you know, of anything that might come up as as a voter, a determination at a public meeting. I'll send around some guidance on that. We're, I'll use that opening to say we've got a new council member packet. That we're gonna share with everybody, not just the new council members. Um, that's sort of like a legal checklist of things to be aware of in terms of O M A, FOIA. And that kind of thing. It just wasn't quite complete to my satisfaction um prior to this meeting, but you guys will be getting that in the next day or two. Well, and that goes for all of you, not just the new members.
Great.
You gotta, sorry.
Go ahead, no, go ahead, member Vener.
I was gonna say to that end too, you got to let us know what we can do in terms of uh retreats and and get togethers. Again, it'd be nice uh uh to develop a rapport with everybody as well. But obviously, within the boundaries of what's allowed.
Yep.
And it is allowable. So city attorney Hallett, we do look to you for that guidance and appreciate it. And member Vener, thank you for suggesting the visit to the uh pumping station. I think we can all benefit from that and know it to our community to make sure we. Further and develop that skill sets. We can be good partners to our administration and to our engineering team. Um, any other items for council comment, member Gallagher?
Thank you. Um, city attorney Hallett, I was gonna ask for that type of information, so I'm very excited that we're gonna be getting it. Uh, it's an important read. Um, I have a fire hydrant in front of my house, which is looking very sad. Um, and I'm wondering if there's a. An approach or if there's something that is being looked at currently to upgrade the paintings of the fire to fire. Fire hydrants throughout the city. Um, the one in front of my home is no longer red. Uh, it's very, very sad looking. And I've seen some of the others throughout the city. So I'm wondering, um, city manager Seisland, if there's anything that if anyone's looking at that or if it's. On the agenda, so to speak, to to look at those throughout the community.
Yes.
I'm sorry, city manager Seisland, I was just gonna say you're hearing from us.
Sorry, and some of the street signs as well need a little bit of updating.
Go ahead, city manager Seisland.
Uh, so I'll start with the street signs first. Uh, one of the things that uh Public Works had not had before and uh we we just purchased actually was a um. Uh, we can actually make our own uh street signs, uh stop signs, yield signs and such. This is something that uh we were uh lacking in that, you know, we would have to go to an outside contractor and it would take. You know, weeks or months to be able to get these is where we're pretty quickly able to uh, you know, fix these up. Uh, it's something too that we're probably gonna have to look at exploring. Um, with the current uh street signs itself, it is very labor intensive. And that maybe this is an opportunity moving forward, you know, as the city council, maybe we look at those street signs if we need to look at a uh. Potential for uh, you know, maybe a redesign or looking at how can we make this easier. And so that's something uh where DPW is looking at right now. As well as we did, we do have a yearly uh maintenance program that we do do with uh um hydrants. I'm gonna guess uh council member Gallagher that it might have been. An oversight due to the, we do do it around the summertime with all the storm events and what not happening. It might have slipped through the cracks, but. We certainly, this is something we pride ourselves on maintaining. And so um, I will certainly uh forward this on to uh Pat Thomas and Tom Jenny and see if this is something that we can still do. Uh, this time, and if we can get a part-time employee to uh work on that, um, absolutely. We need to make sure that public safety can see those fire hydrants in nice red tip-top shape.
Thank you.
Keep in mind, she is the daughter of a firefighter.
Okay, that makes a lot of sense.
Thank you, member Gallagher, for that important item. Any other council member Fluid?
Um, one thing I wanted to bring forward was, um, we've had, we've had a few incidences in that in the last um just recent months with um unauthorized city contracts. And um, those of you who are new to council, um, I won't go into it in too much detail because it was um closed session, which should be respected. Um, but the city did have a a a large liability because of an unauthorized contract that was made. Um. One thing I think I would like to do, what I would like to put a motion on the table for tonight. Is that we uh direct city administration to take a look at the the contracts that are currently in place between the city and um. I guess any contracts that we have in place. Um, some of the contracts that have come to light recently have been kind of um with unexpected third parties. So. I tonight would like to put a motion on the table that we ask city administration to take a look at existing. City contracts and ensure that everything is as it should be with those contracts and that they have been authorized. By vote of council and that those contracts do not leave the city open to any kind of legal liability.
City man, uh, attorney Hallett, is that the appropriate approach? Would you recommend a motion?
Uh, we, I mean, we can, uh, we, you guys can certainly put a motion on the table, um, you know, and follow the normal motion. Procedure, it's not, you wouldn't necessarily be required to have a motion. Uh, you could direct uh city manager Seisland um to do it, but the um. Yeah, I mean, I suppose, eh eh maybe not instead of a motion, it would be a resolution would probably be the better format, uh, resolution instead of a mo- uh. Motion to pass a resolution. Or again, it could be a direction to city manager Seisland without a formal vote.
Do you have a preference, member Fluid, after hearing that?
Um, I don't, I would like something more formal if we could do that with a motion or with a resolution. I I would actually like something a little more formal with perhaps a a deadline on it as well.
Okay, if you'd like to, um, well, let's, we've got a motion made, um, member Vener. So if you could hold for a moment, we can get something on the table and then discuss. Um, did you wa- is is that your motion in total, member Fluid? I'm hearing you want to direct the city manager to review contracts that are currently in place for any potential liabilities by a date certain. Do you have that date in mind?
Yes, I would like review of those contracts to ensure that they are all, um, they have all been authorized by vote of council as required by our charter. Uh, no later than. January fifteenth.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Can I make a con-?
Yes, one, one moment, member Gallagher. We just got to get the motion on the table and then we can move into discussion. And I believe member Vener had his hand up first.
I I'm just trying, so I wasn't uh privy to, uh, I guess this is stemming from uh behind closed doors, but what's the scope of this? Because that's kind of an open-ended statement that would suggest basically a full on a legal audit of all contracts for the city. That the scope of that could be enormous. I don't really understand what you're. Is it, uh, do you have something more targeted in mind? Otherwise, that is like a massive uh legal undertaking.
I'm asking that the city manager take a look at the existing contracts and ensure that they were approved by city council because we keep stumbling across. I'm asking that the city manager take a look at the existing contracts and ensure that they were approved by city council because we keep stumbling across contracts that were made between other representatives of the city. I'm not saying this city manager, but other representatives of the city that council was unaware of and that were not authorized by council. And that has opened us up to legal liability and cost us thousands of dollars.
Almost hundreds of dollars. Manager Seisland.
Member Gallagher, has asked City Manager Seisland for a response?
Uh, could you, could you repeat the question, uh, Councilmember Gallagher?
Well, I'm just, there's a, a motion on the table that from uh, Councilmember Fluid about um, contracts. Um, and, and a review of all the city contracts, which to um, Councilmember Vener's point, the scope could be enormous and time-consuming and the costly to the administration. Um, and, and so I'm looking to you to comment on that.
So without having all the information in front of me, uh, you know, one suggestion that I, I think uh, you know, the city attorney and I, as, as we've had these discussions uh, regarding whether it's contracts or purchases uh, and such, and you know, sometimes there is a, a little uh, not, not so, uh, there's not a lot of clarity within the city charter, uh, depending on some of these. And there's actually room for interpretation that I would actually recommend. Maybe we look at a city policy. Is that something that we could further, you know, provide that clarity within the city charter? And uh, you know, what is a contract that should be uh, you know, uh, approved by city council? What is that uh, legal interpretation from our city attorney? Uh, I think that would give a lot of guidance because there is some cases, uh, you know, where uh, you know, in the past it had been done by, you know, administrators, uh, that was supported by council. However, in some cases, those actually were required of a council vote. And so I would suggest, um, you know, the, the city charter is quite old as well. We're looking at a document from the nineteen fifties. I think if we were to look at a policy uh, that further defines and clarifies those contracts, uh, that would give a lot of guidance and help for me and the department heads within city hall. Um, and, you know, and moving forward in that way. That's, that's my humble, off the top of my head thought.
Well, my sense of what Ms. uh, Member Gallagher's asking also, City Manager Seisland, is what is the scope of this task? Uh, you know, how, what, how, how large of an undertaking is it? Is it something that would encumber your limited bandwidth to the point where it, the result and the outcome doesn't have impact? Um, or what? Help us understand how this might um, complicate your day or help your day.
I, I guess, uh, you know, obviously, this is something that, looking at each department, I would have to have those discussions with each uh, department head. Uh, looking at every facet within uh, their department. Um, and then what is the, you know, time that we want to look at those contracts? Is this something that's been done within the last couple of years, the last year? Uh, you know, sometimes there's, you know, there's purchases that are, you know, within the uh, purview of the department head that they're able to enter i- into. Uh, and so really, I guess, uh, without having a clear defined uh, scope, this could be something that could uh, take quite a bit of time. Uh, we obviously do want to have the confidence of our, our residents, uh, that we are, you know, properly running city government here. Uh, without having it, that clear definition or scope, I would be, I would be concerned that this could take uh, quite a bit of time. Uh, especially that, you know, we, we have a couple other tasks to work on, but I have, I do want to respect uh, Councilmember Fluid. Uh, it, her discussion, the, the contract that discussion uh, with the Gross Point Auto is something that uh, we honestly found. Uh, this is something that when we were looking through, uh, you know, with the discussion about the uh, the cars, uh, upon digging further and further. Uh, you know, Chief Gerald and I joked, uh, this was something we kind of just found in a filing cabinet. And so there's some cases where, you know, this stuff we could find later on. And so, um, you know, it's a tough question to ask, but I would be a little concerned with the amount of, of time that it would put on administrative staff without a clear defined scope.
Do, do we have any idea how many, how many existing contracts the city has? And I don't mean one-time contracts, I mean ongoing contracts.
I, yeah. That was gonna be my question, just in terms of scope. I mean, are we talking about contracts that are existing, ongoing contracts where the city currently has an obligation? Are we talking about going back in time to previously signed land transfers that have already been accomplished? That, I guess that's, you know, if we're gonna do a resolution, that's just my two senses. We should be careful. And I always say careful, just in terms of how we define that scope. Current existing contracts, past contracts, um, deadlines, that kind of thing. Just so it's, if we're gonna put it to a vote, so it's clear exactly what it is that, that Nick is tasked with looking for.
I'm, I'm talking about current ongoing contracts. Not, not contracts with vendors that don't require council approval, but things like we stumbled across this summer or that was brought to our attention this summer where we had a risk of liability because we didn't, you know, council didn't know that this contract existed. So ongoing contracts where the city might actually be at risk.
I mean, we should mention that we did get sued and lost a hundred thousand dollars on that. So it's not.
I think we should be careful about the um, the um, closed session content. Member, our City Attorney Hallid, please stop us if we broach any um, or breach any professional requirements.
Yeah, that, I, the discussions on the settlement were part of the litigation closed-door session, so we should not discuss any of the details of that.
Thank you, Member Vener. I'm sorry, Member Ellen.
I was just saying, we're looking to get kind, we, we've learned from our closed-door sessions that we need to, to review some contracts because we've, we have the potential of being damaged uh, financially.
Member Vener?
Sorry about that.
Again, I'm not privy to all of this. Um, I will just reiterate. Uh, cause I've, I've dealt with, you know, international businesses, labor contracts. I've walked into situations where I had, you know, decades of, of ongoing uh, supplier and, and customer relations. I would strongly suggest that this gets tabled and we refine the scope of this. And uh, to the point of normally in situations, again, I've, I've been in comparable things in manufacturing, the first step you do is refine the new policy going forward. So again, it's hammered out with your legal team. How new contracts and new endeavors uh, get flushed out. And then you deal with the scope and figure out what we're gonna backtrack in. Because again, without defining a scope, I mean, it's, it can be unending. I mean, it's, I, I can only fathom a city this size, how many ongoing contracts you've got. So you've got to tighten this up, table it. And then again, I'm all for it. If we've got issues with contracts in the past, then we've got to deal with it. But you need to have a targeted plan. Otherwise, this is, this is like, oh, it, it can, it can degrade. So.
Are you making a motion to table?
I, I would make a motion to table. I'm not opposed to what we're discussing, but we've got to refine this.
Well, City Attorney Hallid, is this the proper, we have a motion on the table um, already by Member Fluid and Member Ellen. There's now a motion to table. Is that the appropriate um, step to take?
Uh, yeah, we, if there's a second on the motion to table, we can vote on the.
I'll second the motion to table.
What, a motion to table until when? What, what brings us, what brings the motion back on the table?
Until the scope.
Make in, sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, Member Vener, if you want to.
Well, this would normally be put into new business on the upcoming meeting or the agenda. And if we need to do something sooner, so be it. But again, as I said, I, I feel strongly, you, you cannot have such an open-ended uh, uh, legal pursuit. We have to actually tighten this up. And again, appreciate that half the council is sitting here right now. This is news to us. So again, I'm, I'm very leery of, of opening, uh, opening that up without more information. But again, if this is something you have to be pursuing, by the sounds of it, it does, I'm all that, but you have to tighten up what your target is. So again.
So we do have a motion. We have a motion to table by Member Vener, um, seconded by Member Gallagher. I'm assuming City Attorney Hallid, we can go ahead and do a roll call on that vote and not attend to the original motion at this, at first?
If we, right, because you're tabling the original motion. But I, I think to Councilmember Fluid's point, it should, it shouldn't be tabled indefinitely. I, my, my humble suggestion, and as somebody who's going to participate in the audit, is that we table it until the December uh, meeting, the next full meeting of council. Um, and in the meantime, Nick and I can have the opportunity to examine what ongoing contracts, what the volume of that looks like. I, in all honesty, I don't have a sense of if that's a tremendous number, not a big number. Um, as the city attorney, I think it's an important endeavor. Um, and so again, just a humble suggestion is the city attorney that's going to participate in it. We can vote to table it. I would suggest doing it until the next meeting. But in the interim, um, Nick and I can put together a memo and a plan. Um, sort of what the scope of that would look like so that the council is sort of informed on what direction they want to give the administration in terms of, of how to proceed.
Okay, Number Gallagher?
I would also make the suggestion um, that um, we clearly define the, the rules of um, engagement around new contracts, as Nick had alluded to in his comments, and also Councilmember Vener.
Thank you, Member Gallagher. Member Ellen?
Mrs. Mayor, yeah. Um, Nick, I, I thought during our closed-door session, we did ask to get review of some, some of those contracts again. Um, I know we discussed it. I brought it up in that closed-door session that we should be reviewing all our contracts.
Councilmember Raylan, if it's discussed in the closed door, we can't talk about it in the.
Okay, well, I'm asking now, since, since we did have a closed door. I'm wondering, to avoid future closed-door sessions, we should review, reviewing contracts. Um, I agree with everyone that's talking today. I think we should allow Jake and Nick some time to come up with a plan. Maybe identify priority and focus departments to look into. We don't have to look at everything right away. But we do need to start getting that. To Councilmember Vener's um, at the point about following a policy, Nick has a charter that he's been following. It has to do with a previous city manager that did not follow our charter. That is what's leaving us open to, to things that are, that are possibly bad contracts. Um, I know you didn't know about that, but Nick has been following though that charter to a T, bringing things to council that need to get approved. So that policy is there. And that was a good point. We do need to have a policy that we can follow. That is there. Maybe Nick and Jake can take a look at our current policy to see if it needs to be polished up. But it'd be great to make this a plan as we're all think, I think we're all on the same page. We need to come up with a plan that let Nick and Jake decide what the priorities are. How much time is it gonna take? And then give, share, share that timeline with us and see how we can proceed.
And I'm.
Go ahead.
Fluid?
I, I'm certainly open to letting the two of you make a more formal scope that we can work within. My concern is just that everything needs to be looked at. And I'm not sure, um, and may, maybe you'll be able to explain to me what it is that does not need to be included and that is, is less important. But I think there are a lot of things in city administration that do need to be gone over and, and looked at and um, that we ensure have been handled properly and legally. And so I'm, I'm just having a hard time imagining what would be left out of this process.
And I, I don't think I was suggesting leaving anything out. It was more just understanding what's there to begin with.
Well, and just to summarize, I think we, I, I have exhausted the conversation. I, I would just like to caution my colleagues just to be careful about discussing anything that did occur in closed session, also how we speak of past administrations. I do think it's really important to point out that our current administration is performing well. I do have confidence in our team and that they are working diligently to uh, improve our processes and to ensure that our exposure is minimized, um, both with current and past contracts. So um, thank you to that team, uh, to our administrative team for ensuring that that happens. So with that, I I'm also feeling really good about this discussion because it sounded like we're meeting, we're landing in a good place on the decision-making continuum and, you know, putting that healthy tension in there. That's good. So with that, um, if everybody's comfortable, I'd like to call the question and vote on this tabling uh, motion, which is to um, a, ask that the administration review this matter and bring it back to us as part of new business at the December meeting, at which time we'll have a better understanding of the scope of what is being asked um, of us and we can make a better decision at that time. Um, is that solid, um, City Attorney Hallid?
Uh, yes, that works.
Okay, with that, then Clerk Blayhut, I would ask that you please call the role.
Mayor Hodges?
Yes.
Councilmember Raylan?
Yes.
Fluid?
Yes.
Caulfield?
Yes.
Gallagher?
Yes.
And Vener?
Yes.
Thank you for that, counsel. Excellent discussion. Any other comments under council comment? Member Ellen?
Thank you, Mrs. Mayor. Um, I just want to take this time to, to say thank you to, to Laurie Reed. Um, she inspired me to run for this role and I appreciate her dedication, honesty and integrity while she served. It, it really shined. Um, you always had the residents' best interest in mind and taught me so much and you made me work harder and smarter. Uh, I also want to say thank you to Darson McConnell. Um, you had some amazing energy and innovative ways to make impact for our businesses and residents. I loved working with you as you were always happy, helping people and making our city shine. And you made me work harder as well and happier. I look forward to continue working with both of you for the good of our city. I also want to say thanks or congrats to Michelle, um, someone I've known for almost fifteen years. I'm not sure if she remembers, but when we first met, I actually told her that she'd probably be governor someday. I'm proud of her and I look forward to keeping G P P moving forward together. Uh, congrats to you, Max, to you, Christine, and to you, Tom. I look forward to getting to you, getting to know you, Max and Christine. And Tom, I attended my first council meeting with you years back when we were both mad as hell at the city for allowing our houses to flood in two thousand sixteen. Um, I know how you operate and I'm glad you're here with us. I know all of you are here to keep our city moving forward while learning from our past mistakes. And I think all residents should give everyone in this council a clean slate to start fresh, to be as impactful as possible. Uh, it truly is an honor, although sometimes trying uh, to serve our residents and our city, and I wish us all good luck. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Ellen. I really appreciate that. Other comments? I would just like to add one item to council comment, and that is to remind our community that we do have a number of openings on boards and commissions. Uh, those appointments will be made at the December board meeting, uh, excuse me, the December city council meeting. The first uh, vacancy is on the board of review. Um, there is a three-year term that is open. The Recreation Commission, there are three seats that will be considered. There are, I believe, incumbents that are interested in continuing their service there. We do need to circle back, I need to circle back with them and determine that. The Tax, Thinker and Financing Authority has three seats up for consideration. Uh, so I would encourage our members of the community to throw their hat in the ring for these um, positions. The commission form can be found, as we said earlier, on the city website, uh, where uh, residents can find that and complete the form and um, be under consideration for those positions. Uh, it's really important to have good dedicated community servants. So we appreciate all that, uh, all who throw their hat in the ring and thank you. And with that, um, oh my goodness, uh, we move to public comment. Our last public comment of the evening, City Manager Seisland.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Hodges. So I do have several written um, non-agenda items for a public comment that I'll read. Uh, this comment comes from Mr. Neem Fama on Belfour. I would like to congratulate Mayor Hodges on this historic night. The glass ceiling has finally been shattered. I'm also pleased to congratulate, welcome council members Christine Gallagher, Tom Caulfield and Max Vener. With the contentious election behind us and the will of the people answered, it is time to progress forward, leaving the past where it belongs. I'm optimistic that the five council members will do just that and work in unison with a shared vision of uniting the community. Now is the time for reset with a commitment to non-person management of our municipality. Some may be upset with the non-person approach to leadership, but true effective leadership must do what is in the best interest of our community rather than pursuit of self-interest. I conclude by asking community members to support the newly-elected mayor and council members in their pursuit of positive progress that will benefit all. Uh, this comment comes from Patrick O'Hara, um, Jefferson. Uh, this letter is to inform you that Citizens for Fair Elections appointed challengers for the general election held on Tuesday, November second in the city of Gross Point Park. We claimed the right to appoint challengers in accordance with the election laws of the state of Michigan and because we are an organized group of citizens interested preserving the purity of elections and in guarding against the abuse of the elective franchise. Before the election, I met with staff members of the clerk's office to discuss different concerns that we needed clarified for the election challengers. The clerk's staff provided me with all the information I requested. On the election day, there were two of us appointed as election challengers at the absent voter accounting board. We are residents of G P P. We were able to observe election procedures, have all of our questions answered, remain in the A V counting board until all work was completed. I would like to thank Jane Blayhut, the city clerk, and her staff for the assistance before and on the election day. In conclusion, our observations at the city of Gross Point Park performed the election procedures at the absent voter counting board in accordance with the A V voting procedures required in the state of Michigan. Thank you. Uh, this comment comes from Carol and Tom Steen in Gross Point Park. Residents of Gross Point Park have spoken and elected common sense candidates to guide our city forward. The future of the park is bright because our new councilors were focused on maintaining and improving our beloved community. We have full confidence in their ability to address major issues such as the budget deficit, regional flooding, lead pipes, the marina, and future concerns as they arise. There's work to be done, so let's get to it. This comment comes from Jamie Turnbull on Barrington. After spending a lifetime in advertising, no campaign I have ever witnessed was launched without meticulous research. The lack of research seemed to have been missing in certain candidates' approach to the recent park election. After all, we have to ask ourselves what means most to our residents. Examples were everywhere and not hard to see. Our residents value and treasure what makes our community special, schools, parks, businesses, home values, and most of all, neighbors. Are we a sharing and welcoming community? Of course we are. The citizens have voted. We will now see how those candidates who were not.
Are we a sharing and welcoming community? Of course we are. The citizens have voted. We will now see how those candidates who were not elected will throw their enthusiasm into further improving our great city. Uh, Mayor Hodges, those are my spoken, or the spoken public comments.
Are there, those were the written, I believe, and are there also, uh, what is the word? People who are with us this evening who would like to speak with us?
Uh, let me look in the queue right now. One second.
Come on, there's got to be at least one.
Mayor Hodges, I have no spoken public comment.
Holy cow. Okay, well, that moves us to adjournment, although it sort of strikes me that rather than calling for adjournment, we really should call for a beginning. The beginning of a team, the beginning of a community working together, the beginning of solutions for our critical needs like infrastructure. One of my favorite quotes comes from Winston Churchill, where he once said, you work to make a living and you serve to make a life. I say, let's serve. I know you all share that sentiment with me and that we forward march. And with that, I ask for that motion for adjournment.
We moved.
Motion by Relon, seconded by Gallagher. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned at nine twelve PM. Thank you, everybody.
Congratulations, new guys, new people, new women.
Likewise.
Good night.
Enjoy the evening. There's actually an evening left.